All to the meeting in order, the planning commission regular meeting for October 21st, 2021. All commission members are present. If you can get in front of us. Here?
Yes.
Mr. Carrington?
I think this question works. I'd like to amend the agenda and add one item which I have, which is the MOI work on the green site ordinance. I think we'll need a five minute discussion whether we're going to direct it to that.
That's a better conclusion. Okay. And the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close. The agenda is approved. On the item 4A, Landscape Plan 63-9, 2021. Location is 30955, request in highway. The proposal is a revised landscape plan for an existing building. And RA 1A, one family residential district permitted to be used for OS1 office service and office service district by consent judgment. The applicant is Sapphire Landscaping. And Mr. Stapp, do you have anything?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so this site here, as you mentioned, it is a RA1 zoning property, RA1A. And there is a consent of the owner property permitting it to be used and utilized for office purposes. For the terms of beside me on the use as far as site on this, the main thing that consent judgment required was that this area here be burned to landscape to create a buffer from the residential properties to the west. The comments had provided with that information. And we believe that Mr. Royo will go into that further in his report as far as things that continue to be accomplished through the new plan. So basically, why we're here today was this is a, this building after having been constructed and been browned for a while, there was a new owner and come into the, and purchased the property. And in the process of trying to, you know, get it ready and clean it up, potentially to, you know, to market, they had removed a lot of the existing landscaping. And we may retain some of the trees that have been planted. But so now, what we're looking at is a revised landscape plan. We do have, for your benefit if you'd like to, just for comparison throughout your discussions, we have the previously grew plan. You can kind of, as the planning commission, can kind of take, you know, you can deliberate on this in your own process as far as applying this today's zoning standards if this was a clean site, or if you want to go all the way back to the, to the original plan with the numbers of trees and replacements and things like that. So that's just a little bit of background where we're at. I'll let Mr. Royo go do his report and make his comments on the proposed plan.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stapp. I think the decision, this is a consent judgment, it's a little interesting in terms of how we, how we address it. Under item number four, we get into the consent judgment requirements. Required several items, particularly on the west side of the subject property, basic residential, including 40 foot building setbacks, 10 foot parking setbacks, five foot burns required within that setback. And it was also, it was planted, a permanent development of course, worth time to start in 1910. And then we address those bigger standards down lower on that particular page where we provide for the requirements that were met. Basically, for the most part, we find that the plantings that are being provided in that area are generally, there is, was innocent, was a requirement for plantings to be 4 feet from the property line. Although, sorry for the mention, it appears that there's really not people who do that on those sites. Who else did hear of nature removal, prefer it to be 4 feet from the property line sometimes or, this is, this is exciting. It's not like this is a random construction. I mean, as you know, sometimes we create this excitement, we have to deal with some decisions as to what is applied, what might not be applied. This is one of those where I think you're going to have to exercise some judgment in lots of programs, in lots of forums before you receive them. Moving on to some of the additional items, there's a couple of details in this thing on some of the items, show us. Very easy to define it. The most significant outstanding item is the present pop trees. Once again, this is a new unusual situation. This is not a parking lot that you typically see now, where you have ten buildings located throughout. This is an existing condition. They, if you look at, there are six trees in front of the building that are on our west highway. Those are new trees that were planted. Ideally, those would be in the parking lot. These are technically parking lot trees, because that 15 of us, but six of them are actually in front of the building. Looking at the site itself, there are very few locations where you would likely be able to add those trees because it's so tight. So it comes down to the question of, do you want us to continue to explore opportunities to move those trees within the parking lot or on the edge of the parking lot? Or are you willing to accept this condition as being the spirit of the consent ordinance for some others? So that's something that's up for discussion. But I guess the good news is, the 15 trees aren't provided on the site. All the trees that are required are on the site. They just aren't all necessarily in the location that we would have them. This is a random construction. So that, that's an item for discussion. And that's really the key issue.
Commissioner Burden?
Thank you. In looking at this plan, it appears that the parking lot runs down the middle of that burn facing the parking lot. Which side? No, I'm sorry, south. The found area there, in that line, yes, it is the property line. That black line right in the middle is the property line, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
So regardless of what we decide, this is similar to the plantings on the old property.
The trees are right on the property line, largely.
Yeah, it is.
Are on the property line or within the property?
The bushes are back and forth across that, I mean, the bushes are back and forth across that. Do you want to make sure every name is correct? Thank you.
If you could give you guys each your microphones, that'd be great.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. In the consent judgment, page three, letter B is a void. It talks about having a burn not less than five feet in height. There's a burn on the west side. I guess there's a burn, there's a remnant of a burn. It looks like it's maybe a little too tall. It certainly doesn't, it's just a slight raising. It probably settled since 1992, but it certainly doesn't do anything to screen or anything. I'm sure it serves any function. If you've got a consent judgment, you can use that. Part of that is for them to restore the burn. It looks like there's a wall, pretty effective wall on the west side of the wall that would screen the lights up. It's supposed to be, you have to change the consent judgment.
Another issue related to that is really, for sure, should have never been a five foot burn in this narrow space. It requires you to do something very steep and never really apply it in your work. There are three ones still on the ground on top. And I'm guessing that it was there probably over time because it's never been stated because it's too steep. That's probably.
Commissioner Burden?
I think I have one odd question on page two. This driveway says it goes to Grand River, it's a long drive. I was looking for Grand River, I said that's very too long. It's a strange driveway anyway.
Clearly that's fair. Thank you for pointing that out.
We'll take that in time.
Question, Burden?
Yes, it's, did you give it?
Yeah, please. And then you could give your name, your name, and business address.
My name is T. Yackman, Sepharis. Our business address is 210 South, Woodward, New York. Do you have any questions?
Is there any evidence? Any evidence of a problem? Is there a tree standing in the parking lot or a wall?
I don't, I don't know. You mean like when they're in the middle of construction?
There's a, there's a, yeah.
They're close to that. Yeah, they did those ones around, they can see.
Remember the gas and ride exactly? They haven't seen them lately?
Yeah, they did the bad.
That's a lot of talk. Commissioner Schwartz?
Since the consent judgment, it was JDI, the city, does that consent judgment die? So does the issue with burn go away? So it's a different order?
It says it's a different way.
Oh, wait, you, I'm sorry, there was something about success or so?
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering if this gets cleaned up or what?
And I looked at that too, and I think, because it references the ordinance, the 19, section 1910 or something, in that anti ordinance, it says, "Lorey wall." So I don't know if that has any effect on that as well? Because it does reference a section of the old ordinance, the old anti ordinance. And I don't even know on that, for your landscape plan, I didn't see where there was a five foot, a five foot burn was confusing to me from the beginning. Because there are guys here with, and there's no way you can, we can't do those slopes. Both for maintenance and safety. Now, there's a reason, but you can't, you couldn't do a slope that and that width. So I never quite understood what that five foot burn would be like, so. And obviously, this is the wall of the building. Essence is to, like you had mentioned, screening the lights to the neighbors, so the jobs need to be taken care of.
Thank you. We're looking at a plan, obviously, the old state of 1987. And on the property, is it lot 13, out of, with it, brick wall is now. This plan is not showing any development there at all. There's no access to the cross. So in my mind, the consent judgment is not taken in the public, what exists there now is taken in the public, but could have been there after 1987. And therefore, since we have a brick wall there, I think we have to bend our ways to justify.
Commissioner Burden? I have another type of question. This is, this consent judgment, not like a file by consent, file, Mark, Mark, not a, right? Well, the answer to that, I'll take a little bit of research. I think a consent judgment probably, I can say definitively, would probably involve more than four hours because it is an order of court. So in this instance, if, for example, we were to amend this consent judgment in some way, it ultimately would need to go back to city council to have it approved if we were going to play it up to date with some of these issues. I'm doing a, a burning issue and perhaps a brick wall issue, not entirely clear personally to the issues at this point, whether they justify the entire process according to the consent judgment amendment. The document itself would be fairly simple if you adjust to take a combination of city council.
It's city council, it's a file, and you have a property, record title act, you have a property, record title act. The record title act, since this is over 40 years old, now it's, relative to this.
I wouldn't want to jump to that conclusion, considering it's a court order, and I certainly have to take over the statute that addresses that.
That's ours, legislative, that's the issue. They amended it three years ago. It's not since, trying not to be critical, but I would say we're going to approach this. Very confusing.
I was just curious, that might be true, because it's a long course, that's the purpose of our, of that. It's sort of deep restriction. That's, that's, and if they extend that out, you know, it's a year or two, they understand.
I hope that's what you're going to ask. Okay. It's a hard question, I guess. In fact, in fact, you know, I agree that it would help here that issue, if there is even an issue for a deep restriction, certainly that act would apply, I believe. But this being a consent judgment, which is a court order, has the effect of court order. You know, as I've said before, I think that is outside of the realm of that statute, but that answer for sure is going to be, as I've said here today. And if to the extent there is any question, you're absolutely right, Mr. Burden, that may we clear it up? Thank you. Questions? Motion? I am looking at the revised landscape plan, 63-9, 2021. Location is 30955, request in highway. The proposal is a revised landscape plan for an existing building. And RA 1A, one family residential district permitted to be used for office services and office service district by consent judgment. The document itself would be fairly simple if you adjust to take a combination of city council.
It's city council, it's a file, and you have a property, record title act, you have a property, record title act. The record title act, since this is over 40 years old, now it's, relative to this.
I wouldn't want to jump to that conclusion, considering it's a court order, and I certainly have to take over the statute that addresses that.
That's ours, legislative, that's the issue. They amended it three years ago. It's not since, trying not to be critical, but I would say we're going to approach this.
I was just curious, that might be true, because it's a long course, that's the purpose, that's the case. That's, that's, if they extend that out, you know, it's a year or two, they understand. I hope that's what you're going to ask. Okay. It's a hard question, I guess. In fact, in fact, you know, I agree that it would help here that issue, if there is even an issue for a deep restriction, certainly that act would apply, I believe. But this being a consent judgment, which is a court order, has the effect of court order. You know, as I've said before, I think that is outside of the realm of that statute, but that answer for sure is going to be, as I've said here today. And if to the extent there is any question, you're absolutely right, Mr. Burden, that may we clear it up? Thank you. Questions? Motion? I am looking at the revised landscape plan, 63-9, 2021. Location is 30955, request in highway. The proposal is a revised landscape plan for an existing building. And RA 1A, one family residential district permitted to be used for office services and office service district by consent judgment. The document itself would be fairly simple if you adjust to take a combination of city council. And if to the extent there is any question, you're absolutely right, Mr. Burden, that may we clear it up? Thank you. Questions? Motion? I would just like to ask, do you think then, if that's, anything about the burn happening there, does there need to be anything included in the motion? That the wall, the intent of the consent judgment was to screen, the wall is, if it has a five foot burn, being shown on this plan, is that, can we just move this forward? This might. You certainly could include that there, and you could also include the condition that consent judgment be amended to encompass that issue, if you like, as a condition. So either those, or do you tell them?
What they said. I read it, it was like, Mr. Stapp.
So the intention is that you, you want to accept the plan as is with the wall, but not, you're not requiring me to go back, you're not, in your motion, you're not stating that consent judgment has to be amended, is that correct? That's the question, okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Well, I would suggest we just get this thing cleaned up. I don't think, not the city attorney, would seem to be, somebody would have to do motion to reopen the case because Bill Hampton doesn't have this case anymore. And there'd be a stipulation in order, and that would be about three minutes, I would think, in front of the judge. And the consent judgment would get cleaned up.
Thank you. Please, please, what do you think? It's actually, it would be similar to that, the way we handled a number of these whole consent judgments, especially with the question, how does they come back? They have a tendency to come back over the past 10 years or so. The court proceedings are pretty simple, it's usually done, you go without a hearing. Look, the aspect that takes some time is when the city council can have the amendment approved. We can add this without city council authorizing it, so we'll leave that, person, city council possibly, for two weeks.
I have no problem, I'm certain that my staff will, and he's got Judge Hampton, if he has the office waiting next door.
I live in that office.
Yes, I was in one years almost.
But, but, no, it wouldn't be Judge Hampton, he's obviously retired and off, the court has a system where every case, no matter how old, has a lineage that can associate to a current judge, that's not an issue. What, what issue do we have to clean up?
I think it's the five foot burn, the lack of five foot.
We, we, they, they use our cap, so we have, we have, we have sufficient, with established law, five foot burn, it's almost, it's a mandatory ordinance, and then we establish the wall, which we, the law, we, we have, we have, for something we may never see again for 40 years. We can pick the council, they can go over it, and study it, get all that, but we're not going to go all the way back.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you, actually.
I wasn't suggesting we hold this up. You know, it looks like they've started work, and, but I think we can say by motion to encourage or suggest the council, they clean up the consent judgment so that you've got a court order that no one's complying with. And, and there's going to be no controversy. Yeah, this, this is going to, it's simple to do, you know, it's, it's about, yeah, I think Mr. Dr. B. agreed, that it's probably not even a hearing, you just submit it by stupid order, judge signs it in, and that's, that's done.
May I, say, are you not comfortable with the fact that it does reference the whole ordinance, which mentions that a wall would be useful, that type of screen as well? Is that not going to cover the elements of the, because that is mentioned in the consent judgment?
So, through the chair, I'm not the city attorney. I read the sentences, second sentence is requiring a burn, and it references that the burn has to be in accordance with the zoning law. I, I think this is something the city attorney's office could draft pretty quickly, without any, any real cause of your client, and it's, it's done enough.
Yes, I think the answer to the question, I agree with you towards that. There is a specific provision in the consent judgment that says five foot burn, so it is a specific requirement, doesn't mention a wall, that's an option. So the specific terms of this consent judgment rule over the terms of, you know, the zoning law and sections, and you go with that.
So if it isn't mentioned, then, then we don't have the course of the ordinance, the standards. So in 1975, we have a small, we have a little bracket there, which we have to small, then it's a, a condition, because it's, it's sufficient, with, as has required by the law, five foot burn, to, to possibly address.
If you're looking at that, this says that you have a five foot burn, that is from the surface grade with a base of not less than 10 feet width, that clearly, trying to get the two, the three on one slope, with a two foot pad, that clearly would, you're not going to meet today's standards.
For them, you just.
It could not happen.
Could not. Put a five foot burn, it's part of the ordinance, plus you have four standards.
Yeah, or you have.
That's what it has. That, that, that issue, if you play it back, it's probably, right.
Well, I would just like to point out that those parking spots that prevent the burn from being wider, my eyes, not sacrifices. I, I'm not, you know, thinking things, things easier, but, you know, the way I would interpret that is, the judge said, well, you got to burn those parking spots, make room for the burn, that's the way I would do it. You know, it doesn't.
Well, and, and I've covered this, but it plays part in the motion, and if the defendants in the consent judgment, the planning commission recognized to the council that they had the consent judgment, or plans, or, you can't tell that it's necessary to, 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 which are, which are, my answer to that.
Mr. Chair, is there any part of the motion we can follow up on that with the council? Yes, I can say what it is. Commissioner Carrington? Okay. Okay. Any other discussion?
We just, I'd just need that, and so what was the gist of that additional, that consent judgment be amended?
The, the, be fair, the recommendation from the plan, which is that the plans be accepted, except for whatever was required by the court. And like, it, it has to be independent of the consent order, that we recommend back to the council, it depends on the consent order, for plans, which are, for, for, for the, the, the ordinance. And if, in fact, they have to file, then the consent judgment, they have all, so obviously, so, so my, my, my motion was to, like, the condition of motion, that if the, the, the consent judgment, that the purpose of the plan would be, yes.
So you're not necessarily required amendment, you're saying if the amendment's required, that they perform in this plan?
Okay, so we're, because I don't know what a hand words, but if we're talking about potentially looking back at the consent judgment, I don't know if that's a sell, and then all the second idea is watching for us in the consent judgment, specific to this landscape plan, the landscape panel.
Just question this. Any, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye, close.
Thanks, I'm definitely seeing this.
Okay, we are on to item 4B, zoning tax amendment. The chapter code is 34 zoning ordinance. The proposed amendment is to amend the definition of family in various sections of chapter 34 zoning, by equal housing opportunities particularly suited to the needs of persons in time, in time to reasonable accommodations under state or federal law, within one family planned residential zoning districts. And the action requested is to step to public hearing, and, Dr. B., you want to go first?
Sure. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, so a little background, illegal side of this, for the planning commission, and then I'll turn it off to Mr. Royo to get into the details of the ordinance in a few. Background legal side of this, a few pieces or parts to that. First of all, the city has had a definition of family for quite a while, and a lot has happened in the law during that period of time. Fairness in the act is a important statute that's been in place for some time, and there's been some litigation about it, and there's been some litigation.
uh, there's been some litigation there in group homes in particular, among other things, of course, uh, but that is one of the areas that sparked the interest in looking at a ordinance like this. Uh, for many years, the state zoning enabling act has required any house that is occupied by a group home, um, licensed, state licensed group home of six or fewer, uh, must be treated as a single family. So regardless of your definition of family in your ordinance, uh, the city had to provide an accommodation to enable, uh, group homes of six or less to be in any house, just like any other family, uh, and treat it just like any other family. Over six, uh, things get a little, got a little confusing, uh, and a little case-by-case type analysis had to take place, uh, and the definition of family also came into play. For a number of years, the city applied its definition, the city administration applied its definition of family in such a way as to, uh, depending on housing arrangement, perhaps not include, uh, over six as a family, uh, in houses, single-family houses in the city. There came a time with the court case, there had that other court case, by the way, which had said over six in certain circumstances, based on the character, the neighborhood, for example, uh, and surrounding area, and nearby zoning, and uses and so forth, taking basically a plan and analysis of it into consideration for determining whether seven or more in a group home in a neighborhood that has a family, his own property, would have to be allowed, and there are cases in which that was allowed for seven or more. Uh, the city ran into one case in particular, where it's, and this is more recently, uh, where its definition of family, or determined that it was led to allow thirteen individuals in a single-family home. Uh, at that point, we started looking more closely at this court, as we see, do we need, number one, to look at our definition of family, then number two, um, do we need to look at some standards to make a determination of what reasonable accommodation would be, uh, kind of, the do of the Fair Housing Act, what it requires, is, uh, for certain protected classes, such as individuals who live in a group home, or monies, and all of that, uh, the city is required to provide reasonable accommodations to its ordinances, to a name, uh, to a single-family home potentially, uh, and that's what's taking place here. This ordinance is an effort to take into consideration some of the factors that the courts and court cases, not the city's court case, but other court cases, uh, have taken into consideration, like I said, the character, the area, the neighborhood, the zoning, the uses, surrounding, the zoning, surrounding uses, so on and so forth, taking into consideration those factors in the decision, uh, and so those, the idea is to, or some of those in the ordinance, so that the city staff, uh, has the ability to, to make a determination of whether a reasonable accommodation should be provided, maybe or, 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 type of, some sort of reasonable accommodation, in the answer to the question of what is reasonable in terms of accommodation, and if everybody in the planning permission knows reasonable is a tough one to work with, you deal with discretionary decisions all the time, and a reasonable is constantly in play, and so this ordinance is, is an effort to get toward that. Mr. Royal, uh, the city staff, and our office that work on this draft ordinance, uh, there are a number of these types of ordinances around communities, around Michigan, and, uh, with that, unless there's any questions on this background, I'll just start going with Rod, and Mr. Royal, next.
Uh, thank you, uh, your definition of family is a non-profit, so, a for-profit position that is, uh, in comparison, uh, we're not going to figure it out, but, so, the, yes.
So are you in the second part of the-
The definition, uh, line three of the, uh, second definite, non-profit, most people.
Yes, I think generally, that, that is, or is stated, I guess, or, is it for-profit, I think that's getting toward the part of the legal areas of the, of, of, which are generated, mostly the group, I'm not aware of any group home organizations that are not non-profit, maybe some, but, but, I'm saying, well, I agree that this, this is a, I think it's-
Okay.
Or, or, oh, yeah. And then, page one of the family, so, I know what they're trying to do is mean disability laws, um, it seems to me that, does that first sentence allow, forgetting this, six people who don't have a disability, does this let six people live together who aren't in a family relationship? Um, in, in my neighborhood, we had, appeared that situation, you had at least six cars, and then you can get them into a very large driveway, and, and, nothing to do with a disability or an ordinary profit, or, you know, help, you know, a jar home or any of that, um, I thought maybe, I know why you bring in, to mean disability laws, but maybe there's an opportunity to tighten that situation up, maybe somewhere in here, if you wanted to find what, uh, number of days, what transitory is, what temporary is.
Thank you, any other questions? And, just, are we, are we, is this in that? No. This, this is not geared for, here, this is geared for court case accommodations for, um, those that are, apparently.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, Mr. Royal, ahead.
Okay, so, it starts off with your existing definitions, just as a line reference, and then, so what we're looking to do here is to add definitions for reasonable accommodation, update the definition of family, and then add specific use standards for what can now be called a special accommodation residence, which will be what people will be living in if they qualify, um, for reasonable accommodation. So the definition is updated, there's a couple of different things, uh, as you can see, the definition has two parts, the first part is your more traditional family, as we think about it, the blood relatives, and, uh, and foster children, and the like, that's a traditional definition, it's been in the ordinance for, for a long time. The second part is kind of that functional equivalent of a family, which is, uh, those people who are living together, uh, whose relationship is of continuing, non-transient, domestic character, cooking, the, cooking and living as a non-profit, non-hosped, uh, as a non-profit housing community, that's really not different from your current definition. Uh, it does speak to it not being a society, club, fraternity, that's all in your existing language, what's been added are two different things, in the first line, it's that limitation of six persons, um, that's based upon the court case that Mr. Jock mentioned, where the judge ruled that currently, the judge's word just doesn't put a cap, that under this second part of the family definition is unlimited. The reason the number of six was chosen is, is two, one is you already have, under state legislation, the state licensed residential facility is up to six people, which is already guaranteed to be allowed in a single-family district, and it's not reviewed with any additional scrutiny, but it's the same as a single-family law, so that number's already established in the state government. Also, if you look at your census data, the average household size in the city of Brockton Mills is under two-point-four persons per unit, this provides the opportunity for double that, so, it seems like a reasonable number, okay, you're allowed for, uh, at six, which has already been established as being reasonable within that single-family neighborhood, and it's more than double than the typical household size, uh, so, that seems to have some, a combination in something that is reasonable, so that, that's the reason why, where that, that number came from. We've also added on, just for clarity, that this definition does not include halfway houses for prisoner reentry in summer facilities, and also does not include medication, assisted treatment for substance abuse patients, substance abuse disorder treatment facilities, and summer facilities for those not recovered from substance abuse treatment, just to make sure that's clear, that that's not what this is intended to cover. The definitions of reasonable accommodation follow, which is basically, uh, following what is, 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 is the guidance, is kind of, the Fair Housing Act, and areas of disabilities act, that's a change, modification, exception, or adjustment to the ordinance that's needed for a person with a disability to enjoy and use a dwelling, so you have to have a disability in order to qualify for reasonable accommodation. And then a special accommodation residence is a use that provides equal housing opportunities particularly suited for persons entitled to a reasonable accommodation, that's the short, um, answer to that. Uh, it could include things such as adult foster care, large group homes, that's something that's state regulated, but that's more than six persons, okay, so that, 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 they certainly could potentially qualify, uh, because if those persons in fact are anti-gam, um, and they can qualify as reasonable accommodation, and the location that they're selecting to use meets all the criteria of this ordinance, they could potentially, um, as a verbiage in a single-family district, it just depends on all those different qualifications and standards for that. Uh, so, when we get into the standards, that's where it's important, because we have the intent, and that's clearly laid out here, is needing the specifications that are being handed down from federal legislation, advancing a little bit of legitimate government interest in regulating these in the area that ensures that it's done to ensure proper relationships with other land uses, and, uh, let me get a appropriate overcrowded, uh, land, uh, or particular uses or congestion of population, like, congestion of streets and facilities, not having those overburdened. Uh, this applies to various types of, of, of facilities, they can be transitional or permanent, if, if you need a, a special accommodation definition, um, people may be coming here for a short duration, or they may come in here for a long duration, this is different from your family definition, right, family definition is supposed to be long-term, but with special accommodations, if you're talking about something where they only live in there, a lot of times these facilities do tend to be longer term, but there's no guarantee that it would be, uh, so they could in fact be shorter term or longer term, as long as they may have to follow by, first, a reasonable accommodation, and they have to meet all the standards. Then there's specific conditions of approval, and they must demonstrate all the following, that the ultimate residential user or users of the property shall be persons of a home, state or federal law mandates that the city make a reasonable accommodation. Second, that they take into consideration needs, facts, and circumstances which exist throughout the city and the population it serves, and use, and that proposed reasonable accommodation shall be necessary to afford such person equal opportunity to propose use and enjoyment within the city, and then, approval of proposed housing shall not require, or will not likely result in a fundamental alteration in the nature of the zoning district and neighborhood in which the property is situated, or result in excess concentration, and so on. So, you may find in some instances, that someone's proposing one of these, and the person who's reviewing this, who basically says, well, you're right in the middle of a, of a residential neighborhood that has a certain character, you're in the middle of a block, this is going to be out of character with that particular block in that neighborhood, we don't believe this is going to meet these qualifications, whereas, if they had picked this, uh, location in the same residential zoning district, that happened to be flooding on a major thoroughfare, and it didn't have some of the same potential impacts, and it was more external from the neighborhood, that person reviewing this may find that it is in keeping with the neighborhood, because of the unique characteristics of a particular location. So a lot of this is going to require a review of the particular facts of the application, how intense is the use, what is the location, what is the chance that it has an impact on the neighborhood, of burdening utilities, services, and thoroughfares. So then, under application provision, one of the things that is important is to make this, uh, not burdensome, you want to make the application process reasonable, you want to be able to get a fairly good response, and instead of a detailed plan, that will be required of the site plan, generally, this is going to be a house that's already existing in those instances, so a sketch plan would be provided, you may be able, you may have a mortgage survey already, uses as a basis for that, and you would provide evidence of ownership, you would provide a scale, you would provide a recent aerial photograph, you could get that for free off of a, a free source, showing, showing everything within a hundred-foot of the property, location type, land area, those land use types, of, uh, number of building units and structure, if there's more than one, a sketch or a floor plan showing the layout, general description of how it's being served, and water, sanitary, and so on, very general information, and then parking, this parking is probably one of the big questions, if this happens to be a use where people are going to be driving, um, and there's going to be multiple vehicles, that's something that I'm aware of here, where those trucks are parked, and how does that relate to the site, how does that relate to the neighborhood, so you give your views for an opportunity, uh, as a city to look at that. And then a separate document where they provide their basis of why the applicant asserts entitlement to approval as a special accommodation of the, and then the number of resident service, resident services provided and anticipated, when we say staffing, once again, how does that stand, how many people are in here, how many people are riding here, is there going to be a situation where you might have overcrowded, or the use is going to see how many people in the floor plan, on the beds or in the bedrooms, but is it reasonable, is it appropriate, that gets reviewed? And then standards and regulations, uh, so, reasonable accommodation, um, if you're looking to grant that, you're going to have to do some specific, um, standards and regulations, one would be, if that, where proposed housing, um, does not constitute a permanent use in a zoning district, in which the property is situated, the intensity of the use shall be the minimum required in order to achieve some feasibility of use. The use and all the improvements of the property shall be designed, constructed beneath the following standards and conditions, uh, so you would take into consideration size of patient, character, proposed use, proposed use should be established in a neighborhood compatible and harmonious, as determined by, uh, by the application of generally accepted planning standards and principles with, one, the surrounding uses, and for the orderly development of the surrounding neighborhood, and, or, simply. The proposed use shall be designed to ensure that the, or, pedestrian traffic shall be no more hazardous than is normal for the district, all, the proposed use shall be such a patient, high building structures and walls, providing that fear of disturbance in the development of adjacent land uses. So for example, if somebody comes in and says, I have this special accommodation, because of who's staying here, I feel like I need to have a ten-foot high wall around, around my property, well, that's something you're going to look at, if you know a residential neighborhood, you're allowed to have high walls, is that something that's reasonable or appropriate? You may find that it's not, and, is there another location, or is that high to appropriate, and why do they want that, and is there another way of accomplishing other obligations? So these are the things that we would do as part of the application. The proposed use shall be designed, located, and operated in such manner that it will be protected, and if the proposed use is not, kind of, operated to, uh, so there's a substantial increase to the value of under the property, which is, you know, that's the, 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 and then as part of the review, conditions, um, the city manager may invoke, um, conditions that are authorized by law, standard or ordinance, so what you're doing, in some cases, you may not like, you say, or trust me, a standard or ordinance, if there's a reasonable condition attached to that, or to mitigate that, so that, that is carrying out the ten, ordinance, and, 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 and a timeframe, this establishes a reasonable timeframe, fifteen business days, the time of, just a little, application, for action, and the effect of the approval, uh, that's pretty self-explanatory, so this would be added, um, as a potential restful use in all of your single-family residences.
Us, this is for us, so, I guess, but, explaining what's, but, our just have a group homes, scattered around Brockton Mills, and we generally don't know where they are, we never handle any of these cases, this is all really stuff that affects you, doubt us, are you happy with this?
Well, yeah, we, we do that in comments, you're right.
Well, yeah, we've been having comments. But we had those comments. We have that discussion in term of the staff and that is, you know, that is always when we're drafting these ordinances, that is always a primary concern of mine is, okay, here's what we have in the paper. How is this going to actually be done and how are we going to administer this? What doors are we opening up? We talked about, you know, yeah, I mean, there's a lot, there is discretion in here. So there will be, have to be decisions to be made, but determinations to be made, but we're not going to get around with this. So, yeah, I'm comfortable. We chipped away some of the other more onerous things. So I, at this point, with staff, with Mr. Gardner, we're comfortable with the level we're at administering these ordinance.
Okay. And then, you know, again, my thing tonight is I'm not helpful to pull off a tangent here, reading this definition of a family, or exchange students. I ask because I am aware of some families that almost perpetually have different exchange students, you know? Is that exchange?
Yeah. The definition actually says, if you look at the first definition, an individual group of two persons or more related by blood, marriage, adoption, we're changing the term blood to constant, it's constant, whether the need is a little more of us. It's really a proper term and even harder to say, but it's a proper term. And not more than one additional unrelated person. Okay? So that takes into the situation where you have one, one person. Could be an exchange student, could be an pair, could be a number of different. So that's our job.
Thank you. And then I'll echo that point out. I mean, both fully and invariably this process or how it's been done previously. Just a question regarding if applicants working through a process, working with HOAs and their requirements based on new restrictions, having anything that would come into play to some extent, if they're changing or improving, maybe just go through that.
Sure. Well, you know, that is a question we often get at the city from homeowners associations and the answer is, and the answer that we give is that we cannot afford to have any new restrictions. And that would certainly be to be as holy as they have to all issues. If we have to announce the term, whether they come off, it'd be unfortunate. But we would not be taking very deep restrictions into consideration while we're making the decisions.
New restrictions are being reserved.
They can be, yes.
I mean, in terms of, you know, looking at this in terms of greater people, greater access to housing, a lot of people, I mean, sort of, so. Okay, thank you.
Richard Verne, well, you know, what was your job is to correct statistics, probably the most restrictive and least restrictive association possible. Let's not know. They're just still running the same X, or state, fed the last, or run a telephone, or computers, you can say, just not wearing a force suit. My question, I love the change from blood against constant, but it doesn't really all of a sudden, constant. And so, I still, I, actually, we've got a lot of change in the first paragraph as a puzzle of the concept, but I still want to know what a code, a court, a, a is. I know what it is, but in fact, is this common view of the applicant? Is it a rule of musicians still getting on place cards if they want access to that? Quite, yeah. But my question is still more with the determination, not determination, the use of the word family. You're saying that you don't have underneath the definitions of one and two or the definitions that we're asking you that you can't own a house in a single family home if you're living together with three friends, decide to buy a house that aren't related whatsoever. This would indicate that they're a single family residence because they're not related. You know, we have the area, they just decide to buy a house together. But if that function is the same family, then the house can be, so that's the only thing that matters. Or is it that makes difference? I think we have to speak up and tell people we have to allow because we have a lot of houses that aren't related by constantly.
Well, if you, I mean, if there's, if you have three people who are living together to buy a house and they're going to fall under number two, as long as they are living in a similar manner, living, living together, they share a kitchen and they're functioning essentially as a family, then they're going to fall under number two. And if there's two families that happen to live together, as long as they don't exceed six, and they're all living in one unit and cooking together, then they could potentially also fall under number two. So there is some, it's quite a bit of flexibility in terms of different types of locations.
Where are they at to cook? Have you seen them or anything like? We'll be checking every night around six o'clock.
Yes. Sure. Before you make a motion, we're looking for a date of uncertain act or statement once it comes to the meeting of the four commissioners.
Right. So we, first, if we're top matter, if we're, well, I knew that zone tax number two, point four, one, seven, would be under, under permission. Is that, or is that, five, two, the city council, the table, certain?
Seven.
Okay. Seven is the current discussion. Okay, all those are there. All right. Close.
Okay, we are on item four C, appointment of members for the joint city council and planning commission, ADPAC subcommittees for the master plan and visioning process. Mr. Stapp.
Yeah, so this, this came out of the, our joint meeting with the city council discussing the visioning and master plan process going forward and to have this joint, to keep that dialogue going. And at that time, it was discussed that there would be three members on from the commission and three members from the city council would be on it. So at a recent council meeting, I provided with the resolution where city council appointed its members. They appointed the mayor, council member District Fayette, and council member Valerie Noel to the committee. And then the resolution further said that the planning commission should appoint their members. And this group will dissolve upon commencement and the implementation of the master planning process. So that's it. So what we would ask you to do here is, you know, I don't know if there's people who are jumping at the bit to be appointed to this commission, so we'll see, you know, we get three people. So the mayor's on it, so it may be appropriate to have a chair, but we'll leave that to you guys.
I know I'm interested in, Richard Verne, about the other historic, the, the, the present.
I don't like the time.
Oh, okay.
Well, it strikes me that they're not trying to talk towards, but master, master plan process, okay, the process. And I think therefore we should get one of our experts in the master plan process, go there, you know? So I have any, even though you're the one that's first to make the reference.
I'm interested in, basically, because they're also talking about, or who would already, you know, there, I was, there were, yeah, all of these. I would, yeah, I'm trying to, around the city. Okay. Yes, you want, oh, I was just saying, if anyone has a passion for personal interest in it, I saw it as an opportunity to, the learning, grow, you know, with the city and with the commission, you know, when men have viewed it, evolved from previous standards of planning processes and experiences and have been able to take that forward. So I thought I saw it as an opportunity to something that I could take forward in my continued experience on the mission. But I also respect and defer to all of you with your, your experience and knowledge and potentially even the needs of the council members to better understand the process that I may not be able to directly give them, that they, so if you, you're three members to the commission, you know, outside of yourself without that experience, I'd make a word. Question. So it says that this ad hoc committee will dissolve upon commencement of the master plan process. When is that? Just out of curiosity.
Can we start it myself?
Is that sort of, that's going to be July first kind of thing?
Coming soon, yes.
Coming soon?
Right. We would anticipate once this.
You can see, I, 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 my, my understanding that once the committee needs to talk about the process and that's been resolved, which hopefully will not be more than a couple of meetings, then we have, because we're working on the scope of all the master plan now and getting that together so that can be discussed. And so it would be hopeful that once those meetings, the committees, the master plan process can start. So just obviously it'll be up to the council in terms of finding a decision on allocating all those decisions. Yes, I think that's the tentative.
Statutorily, we're supposed to begin our master plan process in 2022. So, you know, there's, there's a, there's a time here to go for quite a while.
But our crystal year is July, June. So this should wrap up by the end of June. No, should not, like, it would appear to be a master plan process. No, no, no. It says that this is the animal process. No, I was going to say, okay? When we get into here, this is the whole thing, are we going to have separate meetings?
Once we kick off, right. This is for the process.
Right. What is it going to be?
I don't know. What have we done in the past to start as meetings, where there are separate meetings?
Two meetings. That's possible. We could talk about different alternatives. We'd rather not do that. We could do a meeting, a board meeting, if we have time to have it on the night.
I start early, like I said. That's all part of the process, right? It's set up. So.
Yeah, I'm doing that right now. Another meeting for the, for the, to go over.
Okay, I'm making a motion. Yeah, sure. Yeah, so, very, very, okay, next, to the, yeah, maybe we have, we have a little combo. This is the pre group of process, the early process, early life process, the, the, the commission, the, the, those, making sure or doing something that's based on, that's based on reality, and we deal with it. And then somehow that has to, has to be made. The other numbers that was, that, kind of what's going on, we deal with, we react to the, 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 the,
But Mr. Schwartz brought it up, I think, as area now is, of Indian, where it's, when they categorize themselves, they have, they categorize themselves as Caucasian before, and now we can't, as they, that's a, that's a very good question. Might not change their population very much at all, just to change the consolidation of the whole, one problem. Was it a very large change in the Asian population drop? I think that in the metropolitan area, the city of Martin, you know, since the second largest Japanese, no way I would agree with that. Dr. Gilson, Dr. Gilson, why are you... Our, maybe, I, there is one, that's not, that's not, that's not, this is, there, there, there. First I saw this numbers. And the city, because it's, you know, it's high in order, but the census did, might have seen it. We gave population, Martin, that's a drop of 10, more than we gave up, or 2,000, probably. It's still going to be Troy. Okay, here on the item 4E, past planning commission initiatives.
And so this comes back, we're going back to another thing that had come in and came out of the joint meeting with city council. And Commissioner Schwartz had mentioned that it may be a good idea for the planning commission to kind of let the city council know of some of the things that they have tried in the past, and that for whatever reasons didn't work out, and maybe even some things that they did. So Commissioner Schwartz has prepared a slide presentation for us. And Mr. Schwartz, if you want, I'd be happy to run this, or if you did, the planning commission, do they want to just look at it? Or at the top?
What I would be looking for, Mark was, kind of, he sent me the last five year annual reports, and helped draw up my memory, and he corrected some things I did. It seemed to me that the two joint meetings, there was a disconnect. And some members of council did develop some of the things we worked on, and there seemed to be a disconnect of why, things they wanted us to do that we've tried to do and haven't worked. And I think we need to tell them that. I'm happy to present this to council, or to let the chair do it, but, no, I voted, and I have a big mouth, at least in this area. If there, what I'd be looking for, I'm not going to go through every slide. We lived through all this stuff. But if there's things that you think I missed, or aren't stated clearly, that's really the input I want. You know, or things you just disagree with, otherwise, this would generally be the presentation whenever we get with them. I think these things need to be brought up to them, and then, you know, frequently, you plan to do things, and there's factors way beyond the city's control that they don't happen. And I, you know, I had lots of frustrated planning professors in graduate school that did lots of plans. You know, they were, every day, they were talking about, they made plans, and things didn't get implemented. So I think they need to be told these things. And there's an awful lot that's on, some of the developments that we've done the last few years, they've come out great, they look wonderful, really nice facilities. The, I was at the trailhead, the Dayton Simmons House, which we spent a lot of time on. That house is in way, way, way better shape than it was. And it's a really cool, public, private partnership that President Carter talked about, President Grant Lissell doing. And, you know, that trailhead makes a lot of sense. Just a quick side note, lots of the private properties had signs, no trespassing. So I think what we did, intended is we brought people, instead of parking in a church or an office building, we'd be parking right on that property when they want to use the trailhead. If you want me to, I'll run through this, but I hope you guys will through all this. So just give me a quick one.
Well, Captain, I see this, I think he had to nail on that, the third major reference of the EV plans. Because I know, at least, there's some council members who really didn't understand EV process and the flexibility against us. And in some ways, with our overlays, it gives a lot more flexibility in the changing the zoning. So I think that's definitely right on, you have to nail on that with that.
I think, I think one of the, one of the key points here, though, I think on this, I think it would be the fourth, fifth major we might want to add, that did not, I think, we're going to the mixed-use zoning district that we tried, after Orchard Lake, the 13 mile long area that we got that so far, you know, I think.
I mean, you talked about it on an earlier page, but it's definitely...
Is it on an earlier page?
Well, we talked about obstacles, the setbacks, you know, maybe that was an obstacle. But when you're talking about things that weren't implemented, yeah, we should add, add that.
Well, yeah, because that was just, that's like a start example, something you guys put a lot effort into.
Yeah.
And it was gonna be a really, we thought it was gonna be a really good thing there, and, ooh, you know, so, that's the statement.
Okay, so I'll end it, and then I'll probably need to add a page on...
Mike, for discussion.
Charmaine? I would consider highlighting the, the Simmons House and the 275 trailhead, both made as two separate copies. Especially because, you know, you've got like an article in the newspaper about the trailhead, what would be the... Trailhead.
Trailhead as its own beer.
Yeah, that's right. It's a little beer that...
It's a beer of the, of the Kermit the Bird, the 275 trailhead.
I would include that as a copy.
Thank you.
I would also include the...
The what you said.
Ruz, Ruzet.
No, I have to take all of them.
Yeah.
So is it, is it, have we talked about this through the whole council, or do they have not do this part? I think there's a lot of stuff there, Steve. I think it's really important that we have a frank discussion regarding these issues, so we don't fall off on the angels and how things may be...
I think probably, I don't know, the whole council, probably.
Yeah. It was my intent to present it to the whole council, because there's clearly a wide perspective on a council, to the point of almost being entertaining, that, how different some of the viewpoints are. And so I think we, I think we need to present this again.
So we should, we have a motion to request the present this, either in study session or...
Sure, absolutely.
But I see it as, I don't, I see it as kind of a solution to new, right?
No, you're right.
Well, you know, there's a lot of stuff, people, you talk to China, and you speak those American states' arrows, and that very funny, that's great, but I think maybe sometimes you say, you know, we're too reluctant, I would love to be heard. If we want to talk about some of these things, things, we should, like, share with you guys. Steve has put this list together, and the colleagues have probably chimed in on a lot of these points.
Maybe, maybe with this practice study session, and then to support Steve.
So we have to, I know it'll be very, new, from one...
Yeah, very, that's fine.
I mean, so many people going, kind of, just imagine, because we just know whatever is kind of, it's gonna be based on reacting. It can be based on, that can't be based on, we're not doing something. They have an expectation, they have an expectation that we're really doing something. So if it's not clear to me what they expected, how we're all doing, based on what they're doing, to react, it's simple, there way. So I think there's got to be a frank discussion about these things, whether you're obstacle, things that didn't happen, why they didn't happen, things that did happen, why they happened, and a discussion about, you know, how we go forward, what they want, I think, with the representation. And if it's totally based on, not based on reality, then I think we need to be able to say, how do we, how do they find this? This is what we're, it's a lot, PD, who said things to the PD process, that would, you know, fly better, turn more liberal, greater lanes, greater density, whatever, got shot at. So, okay, so we kind of stopped her back out. People came out, signed the board, sent an ad, and they got turned out. So where do they, where do they want us, agents, where do they want us, what range, send this stuff? Because we need to know what their expectations are. So we're playing by the rules, we're sitting things that way. I think this is a configuration of the issue they raised, that we can always find to, 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 to. It's hard to know, it will be, it will be expanded, and we'll do the YAM committees, there's some stuff about this. But I don't think we're able to do it.
I'd say there's gonna be multiple of us, study session, probably makes more sense, regular council meeting. Yeah, the whole thing makes more sense to be, it's gotta say.
We're also supporting Steve, and Steve, which I'm not saying is what, well, we do, we do.
If they don't like, if they don't like Steve putting it together.
But as long as you said, you do like it.
Commissioner Verrieren?
Yeah, um, I think this is really great. I think some of the content could be even, even further, in terms of, in terms of seeing, or could be further understanding, a council, and where some of these items, to understand, you know, imagery from some of the development submissions, actually, what they voted on, like, how they voted on the PD projects, what council members voted this way, because that might give us a better understanding of who understands the PD process and who doesn't, if the voting was consistent across the ones that were turned down. Initially, I do know and understand that Kermit's and Helen's only county, as a community, are getting older overall, but maybe we can provide a degree that, you know, get that up, the greater of the outer demographics. I'm not sure if Charmaine can collect from census data now or later, but it would be good to have that data. There are a lot of these are statements and bullets, but I think we have greater information, further backup, Steve's excellent information. So, I mean, I'd be happy to help out with that a little bit, but may not have access to all the information. Oh, sorry, one more thing, too. I'm sorry. The, the point about the great recession and the timing of that, I think is really important, based on our recent meeting with them, because I think they really glossed the point on the timing of the last master plans, and when they were implemented, and when they were renewed, because the recession hit hard, and it, I mean, it took, definitely it recovered from that. So to think that, you know, we weren't doing, how this community to get developments here, you know, that 12-mile corridor got developed in spite of all of that, really, with all the office spaces and the companies that were brought into that corridor, which I think is really important. I think it added a huge tax base to the, to the city. I think you needed good bailments. You don't want to be only a veteran community, you want to have a balance of businesses, you want to draw people from different communities and across the world to come live here. So just one of the city council members commented on it, like, why didn't this stuff get done? Well, it was 2009, 2009, are you kidding me? I mean, we all felt that, right? I mean, my husband lost his job as engineer at Ford, that was devastating. So I just thought, they really are minimizing some impacts of, of the times we've had. Sorry.
To Marissa's point, about expanding a little bit, I just wanted to point out that when we brought up the JSP property, reaction, at that point in the meeting, the reaction, I got, the council members, they said, you know what we're talking about.
That's what I'm saying, I think, yeah, probably, they were really excited about it, probably, so we can develop, or provide a, and then probably to give to them.
Well, in every perspective, the whole council and, and I always said that I knew more about what was going on in this town, so I put them to consider being on a plan, and I did, when I was in a house. And maybe we should be looking at changing that a little bit, for every sudden, from tiny apartment going to their house, and using these once a month, telling them, these are the buildings we passed. Because they're not, some of the stuff they don't have to see, and it's important. And the idea wasn't, but maybe they should be informed that, oh, there's a building, we have here, we have buildings here, there, and here. This is what they look like, I mean, how, to the car. They understand that, except we don't know that, right?
Minutes are, all the minutes, all the meetings are probably the available on the city website, anybody.
Having been for two years in life with Fishville, it really, to I've seen that, it amazed me how much I was expected to read, which was impossible to read everything. And council people can't read everything, they're not going to go scot-free. You know, and I first started working as a staff person for the city, we always thought the city commission read everything. I think that was generally true across the state. I think that's rarely true, I don't know about this specific council. But there's a, there's a clear disconnect in information when I was chairperson, was on the Green River corridor authority, there was clearly a disconnect between community development, planning, and in doing this, I learned from Mark that community development works out of the city manager's office, not in the building. And I can't tell you any of my physical clients that do that. That sort of structurally built in a disconnect, they're physically into different, it's wars. But there seems to be, that's one of the things I want to point out, there needs to be built in a way that community development and, and planning are talking to each other. It just seemed like, when I was on Green River corridor, community development person didn't know what we were doing on specific project site plans on...
We, we do now, they hired a new community, I cannot recall, director has been hired.
Who is that?
Christina, I'm not sure, I think her best name. She's, of course, out of the city mayor's office. I'll leave them an ad here for this couple of weeks.
And I wonder, I don't know why that position, when I come to these meetings, to see what else went on.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm way back to this, uh, largest, uh, statement, it's about time, uh, it was a time, three years ago, we were, uh, growing off sites, well, well, on, developing, this is happening. Currently, we're in a cycle of, uh, including senior living. And, and I know you only went back five years, but for, for track that I've done, the vision went to other sites too, when things are involved, or, or died, and then was, not involved with various reasons. Things change, so I think it's important to recognize that, uh, we are reactionary, I know you stated that we're reactionary, we're not eager to bend, we're bringing things to us, depending on the times. So, so maybe the conversation won't be the floor, but, but in some ways, there's a community timeline, lots of important, you know, the council's net, we can be needing for us, there are other coordinates, they call, I have an application, whatever, we should hear how, we'd be open to ask, no, whether that may be, even though we know, maybe there's a, uh, legislature body, maybe, uh, we dispose of certain types of development, I think we can be open to all kinds of development. We're, we have, you know, we're the master plan. We can, we're the ones who look at the vision. And I know you can't do that situation, you have that close to the bodies of the network coordination, but I think it's a holiday, I've asked, we're here to close out. People make cases for a vision that they have, with private property owners, developers, that we, we like it, we should be able to invent, uh, pay them in a public meeting, and I'm correct, allowing, like, that's a good bet. And I feel like we need to do work on it, because it's turned out next step. So, that's how the court do, definitely need to change on, because we think this is how we can defend our community. Because right now, uh, the legislature body, they're looking at, they need to see, I think, we have to have, we have, we have one community on the master plan, we have developed this community under various, uh, of, of, long master plans, and it has, it has developed according to those master plans. Just to get by accident, we can't wait. And we should make excuses, like somehow this is a mistake, some mistakes is totally fine, we think we're doing this totally fine. So, I think it's helpful to know, and people want, we wanna be accommodated, we want to be players, whatever, but else, we have a role, we have to play, we have to be planners, we have to be planner, and to force our master plan. We're open to applications, the vision that people have, that property, how that fits our, we should give a fair hearing, and if you think it's something that maybe the world outside of me, that we should be able to argue, whatever, we should be on the record to say why we're doing this. Chris, go, Paul, I never take sorry for that.
Thank you.
I did not want to interrupt the great discussion, but just one note of caution, you are discussing on your business, which is a different presentation, you have somebody to do that, so you might as well, some discussion about others attending to this report, which is great, but my caution is that you have a forum, and you don't know when this occurs, so some other communication should be sure. Just wanted to, to tell everybody's line here to get a forum.
Okay. Is there a motion, uh, request that Steve may make a presentation? City council, uh, does it say it's a, do we need a motion? Or just requests?
I would suggest you give a motion authorized. So, the motion proceeds to the avenue officials, send it to the board.
Okay. Good question. Second. Do it to the second. Oh, yeah, already, you can, you don't go down here. Okay. Discussion. All those are there?
Aight.
Both? Okay.
So, just a motion to the regular city council, meaning to the other, but.
That's a session.
Okay.
And, just to pull out the words, you got, you said this review that you were in, Dave?
The number of commission members who are there.
You do not do that, the number of commissioners who are there, even though it's a state issue, we can't make a motion or anything? Yes, I mean, you're, if you're there, and you have a forum, or more there, this is an item of your business, so you would presumably be there potentially talking about your business, that would be a, you know, that, so, of this risk of being lax, lax, or, or less, or less in general, we, we, we believe in up to four, up to four members.
Okay. Steve, if you wanna invite, like, up to four.
Why, why doesn't the whole commission comment, and, uh, that's, 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 that's not.
That's not.
Well, then you're, you, I mean, you certainly could, but you'd be requesting a joint meeting, that's part of motion, that's, that's, so, I, I understand, we just wanted, you have a question?
I, I really appreciate the comments that they've taken, on central justice. I think it's more effective, if we're seen as, this is the main mission, this is not talking, as opposed to this is just me spouting off a couple of your group.
So you're saying why, maybe?
I mean?
You're saying why, maybe?
Yeah. Ask them for a joint meeting.
Okay.
Maybe a joint meeting, we're all, uh, we're all before we get the avocado together, rushing out two big bodies in terms of.
You're a representative, the point of order, we have to, since we have approved the motion, we have that motion to ascend.
So, uh, I would, I would request a special joint meeting, so, just words in the light of issue, uh, to tie the points, and not hide the implications.
I don't know if you need to go there, but, uh, I think this is a presentation, and that's, we need to. I think Steve's asking that.
I don't want this big scene, as this is me. This is the view of the commission. And I, I think, what I'm hearing tonight, when I heard prior debates, this is the view of the commission.
Okay.
So, made another motion, huh?
To be the, to like, uh, prior vote, or anyway, or.
Yeah, there's a number of procedural, okay, maybe you can just amend your prior motion, and accept it.
Okay.
So, the clause ever is clear.
To make it a joint way, you can set it, it's, it's.
Just support the effective material, with support of the parent, and the commission in joint meeting.
Are you good for that?
Good, yeah.
Okay. All those are there, the amended motion?
Aight.
Opposed? Okay. Very joint meeting. Okay, we are on item four F, uh, to talk about the Steve's, uh, talk about, um, the, uh, potential new ordinance, this is for public property.
So, uh, this came out, this, it was a one-page memo I sent, it was in, distributed to you when Jerry sent out four, four items the other day. Uh, this really came out of the meeting, the last meeting we had, with the council on the, uh, the new recreation center, um, which seems to be developed totally opposite of how this building was renovated, um, and maybe they, and it just struck me, the comments and council people were making, what they wanted to see their vision for the city going forward and, and encourage. When they did a, a major renovation of a public building, it was under their full control, things that they said they wanted to see were not implemented. So as I was driving in there, the brand-new parking lot is puddling up, cause it has a traditional drainage system, unlike here. I won't look, a place to charge my bulk, there wasn't one, there weren't any solar panels, um, the things that they said they wanna see were not in that building. Uh, now, maybe that, maybe they went through an analysis, decided not to do that. And I, I thought, Barry's made this comment a couple of times, that things that were done in this building, a lot of it was suggested by, in Geizer. And so, what I want to have a dialogue is, should we have an ordinance for public buildings not relying on a young professional and staff to push them, to force the city, when it either, um, when it has its own public building, that's either a building or renovated, to go through an analysis of the things that they say. So for example, should they put in charging stations for light for children, should they put in solar panels? Um, can they reuse water, um, in the building, can they have a rooftop garden? Um, should they try to construct it according to one of the levels of lean standards? Um, should their parking lot be designed to allow natural drainage? Um, should they encourage raising the height to have more natural light, we brought this suggestion to this about a year ago? Um, is the design in the architecture designed to encourage some public transit bicycles or walk? I, I didn't see any bike stands, or maybe I missed it, uh, and, and, again, it's, it's pretty set far back, and maybe you can change it, the way the building was from, uh, well, uh, and should you bury, uh, utility lines? Now, I'm also suggesting in this ordinance, that there be a big out, so that the city, as, as it goes through this analysis, says, these things don't make sense. So, we're not gonna put a solar panel on the Longacre House, or the Spicer House, or the Park, cause that would destroy the architectural, the historical architecture of the building. Um, so when we redo the ice arena, which we're gonna have to do, maybe a solar panel makes sense. Or maybe, when we redo a fire station, it doesn't make sense to put an electric vehicle when it's only gonna be two employees there, part-time. But, but, so they can, while they have these standards to renew, they can get out of them and stay wide. Now, the other part of the memo is, I don't know whether, certainly the city could have an ordinance controlling itself. Sort of recall back in the ZPA time, and the ZPA, the city couldn't control the signs of, of the school district, cause when it was Harrison, they used to have a flashing, uh, sign that, that drove us crazy on the, on the ZPA. But, so I don't know whether the city, what extent by ordinance, could control, um, you know, the golf, the county softball course on 13 Mile, or the school district, or, uh, federal buildings, or state, but, so if we can, maybe include that, but at least controlling, and that's something the city attorney could look at, but at least controlling city buildings. There's going to be, that ice arena's old enough, and it's gonna need renovation, fire stations, um, are not new, I remember one, a major roof repair recently, three, um, so, uh, you know, there's other buildings that, so, if this is something you wanna do, I'm throwing it out there, that you, you ask the staff to start to prepare, uh, an ordinance, and we can kick it around, and then we can, if we agree, and that's what the commission wants to do, uh, recommend that the city council adopt it, and they can adopt it or not adopt it, but, um, I think the city should put its money where its office, if that's a direction we, that they wanna go.
It all starts from the top, then you're gonna use it from the top, next we're gonna do this, so, you are a lot of service, you're trying to get, uh, the drive service, this guy is, you know, running around fighting, so, I don't know, but I think, uh, this is the girl, I'm seeing, wanting to walk, and, uh, uh, my, 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 who wants to do, but he hasn't missed my, he had background in parts of practice, so, that's, we should have, we have access. So I did a valuable job, in fact, this, that's a, that is really, really changed, he had made Geizer the elf, who was very green orange, this, this, right, where I was, uh, council was, uh, the greatest city hall in Michigan, if not the United States. So I don't know if it is still, or it was, it's, 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 it's around. I, I understand where you're coming from, I know that we tried to implement the protocol earlier on, and you ran the wrong, I mean, I don't think if the city, if it forced me, you'd be, you're right, you'd force it on yourself, and force it on others, it's about that, and, you know, to start, start the mall, you know, where.
Yes, uh, joint meeting, uh, I heard the mayor said she wanted us to be a super green city. And literally, I don't know, you know, the best way to go in this, okay? Uh, the sensitivities, the dictate, the city council, and, and, like, um, so, um, I am called for going in this direction. I'm not sure what the next step is that is most likely to make it, uh, a reality.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I'm not against it by any means, but I hate to spend a lot of time on, I'm necessarily interested in.
I, I, I would, I guess, I, I mean, that we not have got this tonight, but we sense a few about.
The council. And I feel, that council's interested in, in this being pursued, cause if they're not, it's gonna be, it's gonna be wasted time.
Okay.
So, very sorry.
I mean, based on what I've been hearing council say, I, I wholeheartedly support this, I think, I think it's a great presentation of what you said, right? Their money where their mouths are. I mean, could this be also shared and presented, that, in our next meeting?
Possibly, or at least the, the.
Yeah, not the discussion, yeah. I mean, if, if you want to strike out as a city and differentiate ourselves, and say that, that this is what we believe in, putting this in place would, would make a lot of sense. Um, and I, you know, and I think more research would be done, and Brad, or whoever else would support flushing this out even further, there's, there's probably more to, to it as well, but it's, it's definitely a concern.
You also, you just pulled out a.
Yeah. So, yeah, just, you were looking, I was wondering, maybe you're about race frame.
Well, just, just the, the general, most people's sadness, uh, off the cuff, because , uh, it's obvious, we did it all the way, and, uh, you know, it's a, it's an interesting concept, uh, from a policy standpoint, from a legal standpoint, the zoning ordinance that currently, uh, to this would be something that is proposed to be important, it is already, it's already, it's already, as a, 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 as a general concept, that, uh, obviously I have dug into, or, or, or anything that happened in this past, within the unity of the city, from its own zoning. So, if you, you know, whether this being enforcedable is, uh, all I.
That was actually something that I thought, because when we had discussions about the cement, cement plant, I was right, that technically, the city didn't have to come to us, because, when it was being done out of courtesy, I remember that being a comment, that the city didn't have to come to us, it was a city, it's a city project, um, even though it violated, you know, if it was a private entity, it would have to come to us, it doesn't, it's the city, they were doing it out of courtesy, and that's, while I was wondering if the city is, can be held to their own, own, own zoning.
Yes, it's a, it's a relevant question, relevant issue, if, if there is a lot of people who are, uh, to your, uh, aggressive, right, and, uh, and it's probably not sufficient of all, if, uh, if there's a certain policy reasons that are in mind that, that are discussed in the polling cases. So, you know, I just wanted to get out there, in terms of looking at this, and, you know, there's more policy, uh, statement versus perhaps ordinance or something that affects this.
Yeah, I've been thinking about that too, with the, we do have the vision, you know, there's this vision, the council is wanting to put it forward, this could be, at very minimum, could be something that could at least start with the vision, maybe find its way into the vision for the community, saying, we wanna continue.
Saying we want to continue to be an example in every municipal building we would like to be. Yeah, I mean, why not, the hawk could be example. You know, if we're talking to a developer, if you're talking to a developer here, you know, we want to see rain gardens. We want to see, uh, permeable pavement or any of these things, well, go check out the hawk though. Or go check out, look at what we did, look what we did right here, right in here, or something like that. So maybe, you know, maybe, you know, there's other avenues to actually making an ordinance. It does sound like, if you think more about the main ordinance, it does sound a little, not, not big.
Remember, council owners, it's possible, both hands in the air.
Exactly.
So we may get a different, you have a different consideration. So we can ask them to, also, whether they're empowered to do that way.
Any other direction that you want to go? Just in here, that I could just let you guys, like, there, any hour, just future discussion on the commission here. And I like the policy.
But within what's going, you can, yeah, we should have a policy that would turn over, you know, who we can, who strengths, who we want to help.
Definitely something to be drawn with the joint.
There, well, that's got a lot of, we have something. Thank you.
Okay, we are on the eight and five approval of minutes from September twentieth and Sunday the thirtieth.
Uh, thank you, uh, in the midst of September twentieth. Uh, my name is Miss Nalden, the head commissioner, nurse absent.
Yeah.
Certain facilities, the, uh, angels out there.
But the board.
Yes. Still none. Uh, the death, uh, from moving to the US.
Okay. Discussion. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
This is our group, uh, public government, we're, we're here. Make sure that happens. We did, we did, we did. Uh, before we start, Mark, it's been a pleasure working with you. Sorry to see you go. You're going to be missed. Lot of knowledge, a lot of great work over the years.
Got a pleasure working with everybody up here too. People, newer people, getting to know newer people, people I've got to know really well. So, uh, you know, like I said, uh, I am going to be working in the commercial development realm. So, you know, it's one day, you know, we may, at least, I very may, I may see us standing up at that podium there. Hope you guys, uh, hope you guys are square to me. Not looking for special treatment.
Mr. Manny?
Uh, I, I should read my email. I, uh.
You read just like yourself.
I'm just like.
Oh, my goodness.
Yes. So, uh, I, I'll just say hi to, uh, my.
Mr. Turner. All right. I, I suppose your email said you're going to be missed. Actually, I'm going to do it for everybody else. Barry, I'm going to do it. And you, you, they, uh, over there, so I'm going to be taking pictures and your, I think she was your suzy, your fiance.
Yeah, you, yeah, you helped us, you let her use your laptop. So we can go and work on our master, on our, on our, our essays at the same time because we only have one computer.
I, I do, I just like where she worked, they have over there. It's my name, Susan. And, uh, and one of the, uh, they, she was there taking pictures. So I was, that's when I was introduced to my, he worked for, for a day or two.
Uh, he is a bar.
And when he, when he showed up here, I said, oh, yeah, good. But if you're, you're going to be missed, I think it's been a pleasure working with you a lot these years. And, uh, we love you here next to members. Since we discussed today, cement places are on, yes, I'm going to talk now.
I go by their name, sure.
They left some, they left some trouble. Once the movie theater did it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark, thanks for your support. Good luck on the other side.
Um, Mark, I'm, I'm also sorry to see you go.